Good evening, folks. Jesse Jones here from Marion County Messengers dot com, reporting live from Grundy County High School where we're about to join the Grundy County Board of Education meeting, already in progress.
So, last November, almost a year ago now, three schools from our district attended the Tennessee State Bay Convention in Nashville. With competing in all three different levels, Tracy City Calum and the high school went. It was the high school's first year to ever attend state convention. They competed at the elementary, junior, and senior level. So, we had someone representing Grundy County in all competitions. We, the county sent, or between the three schools, there were ten national qualifiers from our county in a variety of different categories. I think the high school had four, which is huge for your first time attending. So, we're very proud of that. Out of those ten national qualifiers, hey, qualify for the national, you have to finish in the top five of the state. Eight of those traveled to Orlando, Florida to compete in the national competition this year. Out of those eight, six students placed nationally, which is in the top ten in the nation. Many of those actually called or placed in the top five nationally. That's huge. Some students actually placed in two categories. So, as this process is starting to gear back up again, I think it's important that we recognize that this is something that kids work on all year long. And as we have discussed, we are just now developing music programs and things in our county. And our students go and they compete against charter schools, and they compete against private schools, and they compete against middle schools. And they're still qualifying and placing in the top five in the nation. And I think that's a huge thing, and I think that's something that our county needs to be very, very proud of. So, I'm gonna start with high school. Colton, do you wanna come up? Colton competed, I think, once in the middle school camp, was that right? He went once with middle school to the Bay Competition, just once. And so, this year, he traveled with the high school. And we were extremely excited that he was the state champion in tenth grade US history. But then, to top that, he went to Orlando and was the tenth grade US history national champion.
Why you go? I'm sorry, I'm... Why you go? He brought a drink.
Oh, good, I'm fine. So, this was Abigail's first time to ever compete in a Bay Competition anyway. And... We'll turn around so that we can see. The competition for paint drawn anime for any visual arts or instrumental is highly competitive. And so, Abigail went and took the picture you see here to the state competition in Nashville, first Bay Competition ever, and was state champ in anime. Then took the same picture to Orlando and was placed second place in the nation. And this is Joey and Katie. Like I said, anytime you're competing in visual arts or instrumental, it is very tough competition. Joey... So, she has competed in the instrumental, she's been in the Bay Competition three times. But she has competed twice at the state level in instrumental, but she has a hammer dual spring. So, anyway, she has competed twice at the state level with this instrument. And has won state champ both times. She did nationally twice. This time in Orlando, she placed fourth in the nation. I'm not real sure why I made it to the Bay Competition twice. He's been getting directorate for a long time with the older brothers. And then when he finally got old enough to compete, he competed in social studies and had placed in the top five many times at the state level. This year, he did eighth grade US history and at the state level was the state champ for eighth grade. And he moved on to compete in Orlando and placed ninth nationally. Okay, stop in and I want to begin Joey's part. Yes, so they... How many years have they competed together since then? Four of y'all have participated here. So, the past three years, these four students have competed together as musicology teams. And so, the musicology competition, it starts out as a written test that you have to take. And then you have to place at the state level in the top eighteens in the state to compete in the oral rounds, to move on to the state rounds. They've competed the state competition. They have made it to the top eighteens every time they have done that. The past two years, they have placed second in the states at the Bay Competition. Last year, they... So, they've done what they needed to do to get to the nationals. And when you get to the nationals, the process comes starts over. You have to compete in the top, you have to place in the top sixteen in the nation to even be able to compete at the national competition, which they have also done every year when they have competed together. This year, they lost the state championship round by one question. So, it was super close, but you know, still something to be very proud of. And then they went on to the national competition, placed in the top sixteen nationally. And then when they competed in the oral rounds, ended up placing seventh in the nation in musicology. Colin Powell, Madeline Blazer, and Carter Thomas. It sounds like Joey is now really good with the demonstration of playing. So, this is the song that I play at state and a national, which I'm gonna shuffle.
We also need to say thank to the parents who have encouraged their children and the teachers we work with and that is possible. And grandparents.
And grandparents. They've had a lot of mistakes, getting into the country, so we have to try and make it. So, I really appreciate it.
One more recognition that would have liked to make, Mr. Bell, as long as you laid that out.
I want to acknowledge what he says. We, we might not know what it is, but what we do, we have ladies and gentlemen, we're civilians. And each year, we get a person who works with me. We have miles to house, we have eleven different homes. And this year, I had a surprise. We have state directors that come by to inspect their places and tell us what we need to do and what we don't have to do, just like the school has to do and stuff like that. But during this time, we had a, remember I had Carla Hall, who checked, inspected it up in Nashville. And I got a very unusual letter about Mr. Colton Roden. We had this year, and Miss West has something she knows we can do.
Let me read this from Carla Hall. She says, "I just wanted to take a moment and commend Colton. He is an outstanding young man. In the short time we were together yesterday, I saw great work that work ethic. Good manners and a good foundational knowledge of making repairs. Those characteristics are very rare in today's world for a sixteen-year-old. Please thank his parents for raising a kind young man to be proud of him. Young men like that do not materialize, they have someone poured into them. Who knows, Cole, he is well in his place for becoming a very successful individual. Mr. Colton Roden." At this time, let's get to the agenda. First round, I would like to add to the approved agenda, the GTL, which is the pavement at Swiss Memorial. So, I would like to entertain a motion that that be added to the agenda at this time. What's your name, this is my second. Second, this is to be put, or do you have any discussion? All in favor, motion carried. Then we have the consent agenda, which includes the disposition of federal funds, ordinance, science textbooks, surplus, below, dismissal, permission, the bus route changes and modifications. Those are the items on the consent agenda. Do I have the, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I still need, I said.
Any discussion? All in favor? And then we have the approved agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the entire agenda?
Madam Chairman, do you need to add anything about myself?
Do we need a motion on that, board members? Yes, we probably do. Let's go back and add the, what we want to do in September to the agenda. Would some like a motion, and we add that? All right. Any discussion? Let's put GTL down there. I believe you say it wasn't. And we'll put the board meeting in September, right, so you have it. Now, do I, I entertain a motion to approve the entire? Sorry, this might be one of a second. Mr. Bird, a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. First item will be the bus flight, fans.
Madam Chairman, before you, because we asked a request and like to cover the things and the actual board package. We got foreign agents, I don't know, having y'all attend the foreign agent pass for a big event or him, an opportunity to celebrate what form to do agriculture. This is a variety of different components that are just readily identifiable for young people, potentially, that may actually attack them. Part with Washington Valley in the past, we wanted to talk, give it over to all of his, his system times, to celebrate everything that falls into, right, it's part of the world. That's September tenth, the rain day is September seventh, taking the, uh, fall. We have a pretty good end of the bunch every year, seven, oh, on the comes. It's just a good time for us, if you can vote in your schedule. I definitely recommend that you, like, you vote this on the calendar. We think the fact that you got human resources, newsletter update, this is requested by the board. I'm happy to say that the open positions column might like. We have just about filled everyone, no exception. I'm still looking for a couple bus drivers. Looking for middle school baseball coach and I'm hoping to name my charter that is on top tomorrow. I would like to have them, I'm still looking for a special education director. I'm happy to say that we... Board requests a couple things together that we received, I paid, so, on the office and the school line included that in the package. All the total is seventeen seventy-eight, that is not our actual ABM. Now, do you have that number? That number, the ABM numbers not include forty-three, three K numbers. We're not included in that law. We're celebrating the fact that we're seventeen seventy-eight. The actual number is probably seventeen four, yeah, so that's our actual ABM. Board request, I don't want to start getting these up there. We also got a copy of the school calendar, board request. Now, board has mentioned something about potentially getting these earlier. Would it be acceptable to the board if I had these in my hands, some type of cards? But the early number, you know, so I'd like to have that in your hands by September first. That would be, mark the calendar, board. I asked questions recently about school board visits to schools and other things. Obviously, we always welcome the school board members in our school. We just ask that you notify the director, school's fire, like, I can notify school administration because when you take time out of your schedule from your job and your personal life to do your own member business, I want to have time to exercise with you and school. I will, you know, board, you want to know, in the morning, to help you, to help you, to help you. If you come in, there's a school, and you have two questions. Don't really be bothered, I know this, and I tend to make my staff. As you know, sometimes schools don't like to be careful. It's difficult sometimes, you got a lot to do, to balance, to... I always welcome the board members coming in. If you just don't have a setup, that won't be a problem, higher up.
Now, I have the agenda, I just dropped the... Are you twenty-four? We have a motion to state second, Mr. Bell. Any discussion from the board? We'll call a vote, please. We have, Mr. David, this is our first page.
Several people lead there. Madam Chairman, before you back, you have the better list of individuals and the on- carry powers associated with this. You can do the motion, and the number of like, the best one highest bidder, you can do the individual, per item. Is what the highest bidder, by name.
I'm making a motion, just like the highest bidder on each item.
Okay, that's right. Thank you, Mr. Bird. Any questions, board, any discussion? Highest bidder? We'll call a vote, please, Madam.
Willard, Dick and Lynn? Yes. Phil and Love?
Yes.
Marion and Marcus?
Yes.
Edwin and them? Yes. Goldron?
Yes.
Mel and Simple? Yes. Mark and Tom? Yes.
Next item is the pro ban bid. If you save a one, I would. Do I have a motion to accept or reject that? Second, Ms. Brunton, I cue. Any discussion?
Madam Chairman, it's important discussion. I think if we're gonna continue with partnership, I would, they want to entertain with the conversation with our owners to see if we can potentially give them multi-year bid as opposed to the annual year bid that we need to lock and achieve the price. That way, we don't have to look at, have to deal with this year and year out. If the board wants to entertain, I mean, we're happy to do this, and, uh, board, the board is...
Please do, Madam. All right, we have a motion, we have a second, we do not have a vote yet. We'll call a vote, please, Madam.
Phil and Love?
Yes.
Marion and Marcus? Edwin and them? Yes. Goldron?
Yes.
Mel and Sable? Yes. Mark and Tom?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the evening chat, head, head planning for the year six. Second mistake. Any discussion, board? We'll call a vote, please, Madam. Next one is the teachers' next assessment, so that. Second on this heart.
About about the next four people, correct?
Any question? Let's do a roll down. Yes. Next item, coaching style. The decisions that would naturally make the fact that the highest request that we would later make a budget, a budget amendment. Do you have?
Madam Chairman, if you have any specific time something that I've been done, you all like before the next school board meeting or you all waiting for.
So in other words, why don't we? Except is the right to. Yeah, okay, why don't we let you?
Would we modify practice if we tried to the majority of all of them? But not like it's like that as opposed to then we should love to be here. Just in an effort to a second call the time.
Questions on that? Do I have a motion to accept?
I make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? We'll call a vote please.
Tiffany, yes. Rosewood, yes. Mary and Harvick, yes. 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 Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the children's flight against the word now with Ms. Brunnen. Do you have to address the board? We have received a new action from the board attorney. The board needs to take some action. I think it's not on this issue, so what is the pleasure of the board's party?
What did the attorney say?
Well, there's two, two options. That wouldn't be censure Ms. Brunnen while we can not censure Zach Brown. I don't think that much more true to which you can. Either a censure or a censure.
Yes, ma'am, that's one. Designating the light that do those workers despite he is attempted to. Obtaining information about potential opposing counsel representation of board of the board today. I don't have any behavior to apply to that. Those were two that meant actions to the board.
Define censure.
Hey, you have a second on anybody not? Let me see if I can pull it up.
May I read his suggestion?
You know, I like the censure of language. If I were to remember where we were. Would they ever make sense of this, board? I don't know that there's any potential action that will change. You know, with what the board members want to do, but you know, if I have a district. Obviously, without protection, we can't do this. Without a law enforcement, we can't do it. We can't do without bus drivers. We can't do without students. We can't do without parents. It's taken. You gotta have a director, you gotta have all of them. Everybody that you think you got work, you got to bring somebody that's running that in my state. None of us are perfect. I'd gladly let someone fail when any totally event. I'm not proud of this. This is not a discussion that I necessarily want to be a part of. Some of this stuff has got to come to a point where it stops.
How are the children being punished if they were loose up in office?
Well, you know, I've had this conversation with the parents in the past. You know, young people deserve a lot of time to access to the government. If we've got social cyber willing or something that goes up, we can't get online, we can't talk about folks that are in crisis and stuff.
They would be punched. They would be.
And you would have a rock click on the water. Hang on.
I didn't hire her, I don't know her, I don't tell her, I don't know her. How does the school work with you, Sally? I'm not here to do that. You only hear from me, you only hear from her. Because under A E A and the five oh four, we're protected. You're protected, I'm protected, you're all protected, that standard and advocate for what's right. Under that, I'm talking. I'm talking. I'm talking, and then I will absolutely listen to her. She. Uh, if the phone conversation says you can go to jail, Allison, for posting our names. Posting a name. On Facebook, that is a person's right. There's nothing that I could do, there's nothing that you can do, but as we're in a board position. I can't threaten her, that's a type of intimidation.
I didn't threaten her.
What? You can go to jail, Allison. First of all, what she posted, you were accountable for how you voted, it wasn't Allison's fault.
She posted lies. Everything she's charged. She posted, I said, I owe my email, I'm here before school or make this.
Why?
No, it is a asshole. They heard it, I didn't say that, Allison. You're a liar, Allison.
Okay, the only thing that we got us was a, was a phone recording from our lawyer. It was transcribed.
Madam Chairman, we have one person on at the time. We've got, we want to open up commentary to floor. I think we don't need to move. Um, say, while we were. Two or two minutes. And you got things that come forward, there's a lot of things that are being said. Allegations are being brought out to be defined. This is not a legal jurisdiction. If we're, we're not, we're not periodized, you know, the community knows we're not playing this ring, we're not siding. You guys have been sent all of them. All the other. All of you have been sent recommendations for applying these other investigations. You as a board, that's what you do. Those particular findings. You have a third party that is actually under investigation for it. Our request to me, because I'm a latest college campus, who employed for me to be head of the investigation department. That being said, that is what you need to entertain. We, we have time for what we've come yet. We're in our workshop time, you know, while we're in our workshop time. So as, as individuals in the crowd, I would ask that you be respectful of our. And let's, let's try to get through this thing orderly in a professional manner because I, I would. My chat, I think we all will admit it.
Can, Ms. Martin, can you read what our complaint manager requested us to do? What are options, we're just clear, so there's no discussion later.
Um, I'm gonna pick up on this paragraph. It states, in order to protect itself from becoming entangled in a possible first amendment lawsuit. File next Miss Brunnen. And to honor the board's commitment to provide its employees with an environment free from harassment and intimidation. I suggest that the board take steps to repudiate Ms. Brunnen's actions and can distance itself from her. In part of injury parlay, this would require a motion to censure. An appropriate motion could read as follows. I move that the Grunde County Board of Education formally censure Ms. Brunnen for having harassed, intimidated, and threatened an employee. And apparent retaliation for her having exercised her rights under the First Amendment. I further move that the board condemn Ms. Brunnen's actions and admonish her not to harass, intimidate, or threaten our employees at any point in the future. Since Ms. Brunnen, obviously, it says that Ms. Brown obviously has conflict of interest. She may not vote on this motion. Also, rather than requiring a majority of the vote, a vote, a censure would only require a majority of members present and eligible to vote on matter. Thus, if there were seven members present and eligible to vote, the censure would require four affirmative votes. Then this is a question. Mr. Spock, maybe not a turn. Board, your decision is what you want to do with that.
I make the motion and we accept, Mr. Durbin's, a recommendation.
Do we have any discussion?
From my understanding, the censure would mean that Ms. Brunnen would still be a member of the school board. She would sit down there by herself and participate in no actions whatsoever of this board. She would vote on nothing and have nothing to add into it. So basically, she would still remain on the board, but not be a representative of our business.
I ask for clarification on that this afternoon. This simply is a motion that is to be put in the board's minutes. However, the board votes, as far as affected her right to sit on the board, it is more effective. As far as her right to vote on any motion, it does not affect. As far as her participating in any discussions, it's not effective. Is that correct, Dr. Durbin? Did I understand all that correctly?
Madam Chairman, I think that's correspondence that you have received from Mr. Bennett. I, I'm not reading that nor would see that. I trust the information that you give. I think I talked to you at the time today, you know, he said there is a possibility that the county commission made what could get involved after the tag. And that could cause a resolution to, as far as a question. You know, as a more of. I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna get done. She, the board member who talked about me, I asked her to talk about me because the show was drawn up and you were up. And all that counts up there too. That is, you know, they were all up. They'll, they'll, you know. And. Do something that's only a little bit old. That's all I'll do. If you got to come to my office and go to my hair back, we'll ship it over, we'll leave it. Anytime you want to. You don't necessarily have to lock me or anybody else that's on the team. But we would like to work together. On behalf of these children. Our district is too important, but all things are always. Any, I apologize to the county commission, I apologize to the public community. I never want any of our teachers. To have the reference being thrown home. If that was done, I apologize. If I've done something to offend somebody that, well, I apologize. Does not lie down this here. I'm sorry that we had to come to this. I do believe people make mistakes and I do believe people can watch another spectrum and see what they did. You gotta be invested in change, you need to change that. Madam Chairman, that's all I have to say.
Any other discussion for board members? No, I asked. I asked. It's subtle, as a board. With a teacher, what happened to the subtle media policy, myself and media? What happened on that? I would have said, Mark, if she would have been posted to the tray. Everything she posted was hacked for. She didn't post anything. I called you multiple times. I called you twice. I called you and you received, I bought my phone records. They said, yeah, I did. I called you, they run twice and I'm the hell city. I called you back because I thought I learned it. You called me the third time you recorded. That's all that we ever talked on the phone. So don't you say I called you multiple times. Everything you posted on that was, even the last. You put our names out there. You had us last and all. So what about that? Ain't that a last name? This guy right here, this Ford River, got what? How many flat tires were they putting nails out? This guy bought hay buns in his fields and his hay buns, field buns. So you're gonna tell, oh, yes, you're right. Because you, you didn't have a vendetta against this guy. I don't. What would I say to that one of the teachers? I would check that out. You did not come to fight. I take it, Scott. Are you ready to vote? Do you vote for the young man? I for the motion to censure, or do you vote no? Yes. The censure reads that the, the board is stating that we. The motion reads that the Grunde County Board of Education. Censors Ms. Brunnen for having harassed, intimidated, and threatened an employee. And apparently retaliation for her having exercised her rights under the First Amendment. I move, or whoever's, my, the motion is that the board condemn his action and not admonish her not to harass, intimidate, or threaten the other, other employees at any point in the future. This goes in the minutes as, as the motion states. And then after we vote on that, whether the vote, the motion passes or whether the motion fails, we move forward.
So we're just voting on her not to intimidate her, just to keep her off?
Yes, 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 yes. Any other questions?
Do we all have enough time for any more clarity? Another question?
Right, your question.
Who wants to take it alone?
I would not clear it. It's like they've had three times. The way I understand it, without the public censure, board would assume potential liability with the associated with.
So you're saying that we don't, that we don't. So you're saying that we don't, uh, don't...
Right, and we don't want to...
You're, you're probably separating yourself from this office.
So that we won't make a vote and I also give one vote to him? Allison, can you kind of start the plate?
Okay.
Now, let us be clear, we go to the argument. Oh, the argument's fine. That's why I'm adding, it's why we're placing, but if there is a clear case, it could very well hurt our history. And I'm, when I say clear case, I'm talking fun and...
Are we ready to vote, board? Well, I'll vote for it, man.
Steven? Phil was love?
Yes.
Mary and Harms? And Lundy?
Yes.
Kelly, Tom, I guess you're part of the other.
Val, Stinkle?
Yes.
Carter, Thomas?
Yes. I should care. Next thing on the agenda is Mr. Lakes. Mr. McStay, right after the other board meeting, and he asked the speaker what happened to Cullot, the city of Cullot. Mr. Lakes, what was it? I said, "We will this."
I'm Tom Lake, I hear the city of Cullot. Uh, I'd like to read to the petition that we put out among citizens. We're at the county board legislation, close Cullot Elementary Code in twenty twenty-three. The building is vacant, current, except the county extension service using that for security. City Cullot wishes to gain control of property, which we just found at the city hall, which we don't have. Have an office of very few operations and a meeting. We wish to evaluate the building and see what areas can be used and what compared. We believe gym can be used year-round, used for basketball, volleyball, and other things. The other playgrounds can be used for opportunities for use by citizens, major college classes, or different organizations will be able to use. City can apply for rats to help certain mental health compared to other groups. Cullot Elementary School is a cherished place for many members of the community, and we need to return it straight to Cullot Elementary to repurpose and make it a community. We put out the petition in the bid for Cullot and one outside the city of Cullot. We had it out for a little over a week and a half. We got four hundred and thirty signatures. One hundred and ninety-two of them signed as residents of the city of Cullot. We don't know how many of the others are for Cullot because I think the town has raised it yet. So, Cullot has a population seven hundred and forty-one, over twenty twenty since. So, you know, we feel like that we can repurpose that, that building to give not only Cullot, but the whole town. Uh, in, in the past, schools have been given away, other cities. High school at Tracy City was given to the city. Plainview Elementary School a few years ago was given to the community. Alton Locks Elementary School was given to the city of Alton Locks. Hardwood School, from what I've been told, was offered to the city department. But it was given to, to the county. Uh, so, when not the same, the city hall, a group of law, sits on elementary school ground on a path over, over one minute. Something like this could bond our communities together again, help to give us a place to do things together and have a place there. Uh, city is able to get grants, um, we apply services or something there, they help in the past. And I feel like we, we can make that building into something. As I told the city council, we may have to pull out the building back. But plans are, my plans are going to stay, stay walkin' can use, and we know that it's part of, that are good. Real life. If we can, as to you, you live, live in that building and property, we're enjoying property, which is the problem for our... We still like, we repurpose that and make it here and back. I've heard a lot of people, uh, despite their weakness, and I don't know about what to do with it. So, you got the town to set up and offer ten big, in order to stand in the same manner. And I still like, we build in certain places, that's true, pride, that's all that's good. I think a lot of people are tired of it. Obviously, you speak to me, you're gonna give a question, I think what happens is that.
I want to consider this on the top of my mind right now. Uh, I have a wire of five proposals that is, is coming on X, and before we vote on that, I have to see the green proposal. I have to see the old proposal, I have to hear that. I want to put it forward, but I never, I never, I never said it's a false fact.